Yeah, I think I'm gonna get my rack to reach ground. You had, did you have Steve? Okay, yeah. Was it Steve? Is he still in Florida? Is Steve there?
Here we have two.
Thank you, sir.
And you don't even know who I am, right?
Different feeling, yeah. He also used to play like C six or C seven, so playing like C four is a little bit higher. You have work all day? You were like moved to something? Waylon's is the restaurant, he's uh, he was, he was a man, he's uh, he's like.
There you go.
Nobody wants to go out on a cold day.
I got experience on my side.
We had another, at least another rain barrel or two. We got a rain barrel hooked up and it's just full. Blown right out.
Let's go ahead and call the meeting order if you will, please. This is a regular council meeting, Thursday, January twenty-sixth, two thousand twelve. If you would please stand and join me in the place of allegiance for a night standing for the indication.
I plead the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Heavenly Father, as we gather here tonight to do the business of the people of the city of Canton, grant each of us the knowledge to understand the issues, strength to respectfully discuss those issues, and the courage to do what is right for this city. Amen. For some of you who may or may not know all by our, uh, your city government officials, I thought I would take a minute and introduce each member. I'm Gene Hopgood, I'm the mayor. Uh, to my left, Mr. Councilmember John Beresford, uh, who is with, he is Ward three, I believe. Uh, Mr. Bill Bryan, Ward two, councilmember. Hooky Hugt Cupman, Ward one. My media left is Bobby Dyer, our city attorney, and to my media right is Scott Wood, our city manager. Uh, then we have Mr. Jack Goodwin, uh, Ward two. Off of us is Ward one, and Mr. Glenn Cummins is Ward three. Uh, we have our clerk, Susan Stamp. That's who's up here, so now we, uh, move forward with the meeting tonight, and we will open our ten-minute public input period. Uh, traditionally, if, you know, if we actually need more than ten minutes, the council has generally obliged that, to extend the respect, uh, the input from the citizens. Uh, our first speaker tonight is, uh, Mr. Waylon Carter. Just come out and say a word, please, sir.
First thing I want to say is I appreciate each and every one of y'all, I respect you. I respect everything City Council can do for us. I bought my house in two thousand one with Hill Crest City. Since day one, my consumption, my water bill has been, on average, sixty-seven thousand gallons. I talked to Mr. Engle on the phone. I get a bill for September for the consumption of twenty thousand gallons. I have a family of six. I talked to Mr. Engle and said the possibility could be late, getting benefit without, I checked it out, no way. I waited until my next bill come, the consumption drops. So therefore, I want to know why I have a consumption of twenty thousand gallons for the month of September. And I've been there since two thousand one, I'm a taxpayer, I vote. I want to know what can be done about this.
Thank you very much. I will say there is a procedure now, I think, in place actually to allow for that, uh, for adjustments and remediation of that. Uh, maybe we may be talking about part of that tonight as far as the.
Yes, we do have a still program that Mr. Wood has, and it's a form that's filled out as per form, so we still have that program going.
I'll be glad to take the gentleman into the lake, and I think we've got a name and a gift as a drift. And if they look at it in community, we get knocked tomorrow sometime next week as to what our findings are about it.
I've actually emailed you and never got a response from them. So I'd prefer to talk to the mayor and say it.
Well, we will, we will ensure that you get a response back within the next few days. And if not.
Twenty-four hours, it'd be great.
Give me a call. Okay.
I've actually done that.
We'll do our best. Uh, Jeff Jones?
Mayor, council, good evening. Uh, first I want to say I'm thankful to the leaders that have reached out to express their concern or open-mindedness regarding the water department and reducing the rates, or even entertaining the idea of merging the city and county. And I agree, any proposal should be thought through from all angles in order to have the best outcome for the citizens. Uh, we are here representing the citizens who pay far too much for water in respect, uh, to the rest of the twenty-one surrounding water authorities. Canton ranks sixth out of twenty-one for water, not bad, but yet fifteenth out of seventeen for sewer. And it's the sewer that's out of line in respect to water. The national average usage of water for families of four is twelve thousand gallons of water per month. So a Canton family will pay a hundred and sixty-three dollars and thirty-five cents a month for water and sewer. We are asking that you relieve some of this burden of families today and vote to match Cherokee County, Cherokee County's rate structure. We ask that you vote in favor of families and save us twenty-three dollars and fifty-five cents a month. This is a small concession we are asking, considering the absolute debacle that took place last April when you voted to increase our rates and change billing systems, forcing families to drain savings accounts to pay for water. Some families were billed so erroneously and faced bills of three hundred dollars for twenty-two thousand gallons. This happened to myself, my next-door neighbor, and a firefighter and his fiancee. The best hope was that the city manager would give us a hundred dollar credit. It is also true, this management does not really know what they ought to be receiving in revenue, and so the proposed idea is to wait and see, and maybe reduce rates later, but meanwhile, we pay. If you cannot compete with Cherokee County in offering us the same quality services for the same price, the question needs to be asked, why does Canton exist? A merge, maybe they answer the city needs, but first, the reservoir must be dealt with. We ask you to make the unloading of the reservoir your number-one commitment. In addition, the city seems to have become a tax haven for seniors. We subsidize their trash service at the tune of two dollars and fifty cents per resident, and also pay for their city services. This argument, the argument rather, seniors are on fixed incomes is not fair because many families are facing a decrease in income, for example, furloughs. Most families cannot afford to join the YMCA or the golf course, yet we pay for it. The city needs to put families first and make the necessary sacrifices to their budget, including paving private roads in communities. Paving private residential roads is not a high priority, but bringing down our water rates needs to be. Thank you, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the opportunity to speak, and, uh, city councilmen. Uh, I did want to address the issue of the senior tax exemption. That's the one that's the hot button for me, because I'm a senior. Uh, but, uh, yes, I, I know that most, everybody is facing issues right now. Uh, young couples are facing issues, seniors are facing issues, uh, and everybody's different. We all aren't in the same boat, we all have different stages in life. But I can tell you one thing, the seniors have already been there, they've been there where the young people are. Many of them have struggled, uh, to get where they are today. Uh, now they're, they're, they're facing a, a lifetime of literally fixed incomes, Mr. Jones said. Uh, but let's talk about the fixed income thing for just a second, because I know a little bit about that. Uh, seniors have two issues that are primarily, uh, in front of them. One of them is finances, the other is healthcare, and the two are often interrelated, very much so. So, the fixed income issue, where do you, where do seniors get their money? Uh, maybe a pension, social security, probably, uh, some savings if they've been fortunate enough and wise, uh, throughout their years, and lived beyond, uh, below their means. Uh, so let's look at the savings end of it. Stock market, uh, over the last thirteen years has done nothing. It's been up, it's been down, but the stock market today, major by the S and P five market, is right where it was thirteen years ago. No growth in income there to speak of. How about pensions? Only a third of the seniors get a pension, and most of those pensions are not indexed for inflation. So over years, even a two percent inflation rate, uh, over a twenty-five-year period will knock a fifty thousand-dollar a year pension down to about thirty-five thousand, so decrease in purchasing power there. Uh, social security? Typical person that is on social security gets a thousand bucks a month, that's it. The last two years, there's been no raise in social security, uh, to cover cost of living. We did get one this year, a little one, but there hasn't been one in the previous two years. Uh, in the meantime, the last three years gasoline has gone from, so if you don't drive, this is not an issue for you, but it's gone from a buck seventy-nine to where is it now, three forty-three, I guess? About a ninety-one percent increase, hamburgers up twenty-four percent in the last three years. I could go on and on and on, but the cost of living is going up across the board. And yet, the income for senior citizens is not. Far as healthcare is concerned, uh, you don't want to know the numbers there, but a person, a couple that's sixty-five today is going to wind up paying about two-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars the rest of their life for healthcare. That's out of pocket. So, where's that money coming from? I mean, it's, it's coming from savings, it's coming from these other areas. People can't put their money in the stock market where you have a fifty percent crash in two thousand and then another fifty percent crash in two thousand and eight. Uh, if you can't take that risk, you go to CDs, you go to money market, uh, treasury bills, they're paying nothing. And actually, you lose money when you put money into them, because the time you factor in taxes and inflation, you've lost money guaranteed, so. These are some of the issues facing senior citizens. The tax-exempt part for them, it, it has been a draw to draw people into Cherokee County and, and, uh, in the city of Canton. I know Fulton County, I mean, Cobb County, I think, has an exemption. Uh, I know that's a county issue and not a city issue, but it's part of the same package. So you're drawing people in here from other parts of the country. Some are, as I say, in a better state of life than others, but they spend money when they come in. They spread it around, they support businesses. I'm from the Soleil community, it, it is a nice community up there. There are ten houses under construction right now, and those are a lot of jobs that are being furnished for those ten houses. I don't know how many other subdivisions in Cherokee County and even, and, uh, in Ram Can that can boost ten houses under construction, six more under contract. So, a lot of money is being spent, being passed around, and of course, other people will talk about the benefit that some of these folks bring in and their support of various charities and things like that, so. One final thing I'll mention about seniors, um, about one-third of all children today of seniors are getting some kind of financial help from the seniors. So there's another area right there where money is being spent. I don't know what the number is for seniors that are taking care of their parents or helping with their parents, but I know quite a few people that are doing that as well, so. A lot of stress on a lot of families, the senior citizens aren't in a position to go out there and remake the money. Uh, they, they can't rebuild it. Uh, whereas younger couples that are struggling today, you'll get through it because of seniors did. One last final thought, as far as the people coming in from different areas and bringing expertise and bringing money and bringing savings accounts and, and, and helping the businesses that are in the area, that an increase in the taxes, probably not on the city level, but you don't want to get the camel's nose under the tent, uh, but, uh, could very well be a deal-breaker. Uh, you're looking at, in some cases, two, three, four hundred dollars a month for the, for the taxes. Of course, there's an old saying that the old farmers have always known, but I think some of the policymakers in Sacramento, New York City, and, uh, Chicago, and certainly Washington DC have long since forgotten, and that is you don't eat your seed corn. Don't drive the seniors out. Thank you very much. Steve Blum.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. Uh, good evening, residents and friends. Mr. Keys actually took about ninety-eight point five percent of my discussion, uh, so I will just summarize it. I also want you to all know that, um, since the beginning of last summer, I have been a strong critic of the city's policy, uh, administration and operation in, uh, in what they have done, uh, past, present, and hopefully not future, with our water department. Uh, and sir, I will tell you, uh, that I am the proud owner of bills for seventy-two thousand gallons of water, and I do qualify being a senior, and that bothers me. Senior is now almost a negative word. I still work, I still pay lots of taxes, both at the, uh, the local, uh, state, and, you know, at federal level, and we are a constituency, as Dwight had suggested, and is actually a fact. When you take a look at what our group of almost seven hundred individuals are doing, not within Soleil, what they're doing within the city of Canton, Cherokee County, and the metro area, in not only providing dollars, but in man and woman hours, working with a number of charities, working with a number of civic organizations, working with the needy, because we're not looking for any compensation, we're not looking for anybody to stand up and wave the flag that we're doing such a great job. All we're saying is, we belong to this community, we love what we see, and we want to be major contributors. contributors. In addition, and Mr. Keyes suggested this, it's absolutely a fact, if you look at the one-forty corridor and the reason they have opened retail establishments by us and in Great Scott, isn't because we're in a, coming out of a great recession or depression in the real estate, in the real estate industry. What they saw was consumers that are spending money. And every dollar that we spend, we pay sales taxes, and that does come back to the communities where we live. And every business that opens up in our community, not in the county, guess what they're doing? They're hiring people. They're putting people back to work who also have the opportunity to spend money in our wonderful, in our wonderful community. It's really important, and the last point I want to make, if I was sitting in many of your shoes as I was raising my family, I probably would have the same questions and concerns and apprehension, why should seniors quote-unquote "get a benefit"? But the truth of the matter is, and I was the second resident to purchase within Old Seasons Now Soleil, the reason I chose Cherokee County and Canton was because of the tax advantage. I had other opportunities out there, but the tax advantage was there. And if you want to go ahead and change the way the tax situation works, I'll never vote for that, I'll never support it, but you can't take taxes, benefits away from people who made very lifelong decisions to come into an area based upon current rule and regulations and taxation. Thank you.
Excuse me, good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. My name is Arne Kornblum. I've been a resident of Canton for the last four and a half years. As a senior resident of Canton, I must take issue with Councilman Bryan's proposal to raise revenue by way of eliminating the senior tax exemption. Many retirees were attracted to Canton, as previously mentioned, for the favorable tax benefits. We support, we also support the local economy by patronizing merchants, thus indirectly providing more tax revenue to the county and city of Canton. If the senior tax advantage is eliminated, baby boomers contemplating moving to Canton for the economic benefits could and most likely would reconsider this move. This will impact the city of Canton by way of a loss in sales tax, business taxes, the loss of business expansion, licensing fees, the loss of revenues relating to building permits, the loss of impact fees that each new potential senior home buyer would have indirectly provided to Canton. It was also mentioned previously by Councilman Bryan that he somewhat inferred that all seniors were well-off. Some are, but most probably are not. If the councilman takes a look down at the senior center in Canton, he will see how many seniors are waiting to have a meal served to them or to take home. I know this because my wife and I both deliver food, packaged goods from out development to the senior center. In fact, in Canton, according to the two thousand and ten census, about six-point-six percent of the families and eleven-point-two percent of the population were below the poverty line, including seventeen-point-four percent of those aged sixty-five and over. That is certainly different than the reference to well-off retirees. Again, in reference to the well-off retirees, everything is relevant. Well-off at one time could mean a liquid worth of upwards of five-hundred thousand dollars. In today's economy, with interest rates near an all-time low, the well-off retiree of yesterday would only earn about one percent on their five-hundred thousand dollars or about five thousand dollars a year, and they must pay taxes on that five thousand dollars. Considering, again, the well-off retiree lives on a fixed income and doesn't get a raise or a promotion to a higher-paying job, that's not much of an income. Well-off, I don't think so. Please reconsider your position on tax exemption and consider other options such as attracting more industry to this great city. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak before you.
Cheryl Day. I'm not going to come here prepared with pre-written anything. I thank you for hearing me. I appreciate the audience that has come because they do have issues of concern. I moved here to be near my children's. I didn't move here for a tax break. That was an unexpected bus. There's no way that you can take, rightfully so, and take a hundred percent away from people, something that was part of the community to begin with. Nobody's asking for a handout. I don't live in a large subdivision. I live in a very modest home. I have a lot of people that I know over the twelve years that I've been here who lead reasonable, modest lives, and they make great sacrifices to have a roof over their head and the medicines that they require. I'm not looking for a handout, but I don't think that you can listen to Mr. Bryan and his tirades over what people have that he's not familiar with and has not done his homework. These things are not entered lightly, they are not dealt with as something against the young. I have children in the neighborhood, in the area. I have grandchildren in the area. I know how they struggle to make ends meet. I'm not looking to deprive my children, myself and my children, you know what I'm trying to say. I'm not trying to get something and make it tough on the kids. That's not what it's all about. I think that this needs decent time and consideration. I don't think it should pit one generation against the other that is detrimental to everybody involved. I don't bring with me a large category of information and facts. The fact is, we all live in this community, and there is no way that any one group can be looked at without consideration of the other one. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, I, Council members, city attorney, city manager, I don't have to tell most of you that two thousand and eleven was not Canton's finest year. There's no doubt. The year was dominated in the media by embarrassing water dilling problems and, of course, the tragic murder of an Emerson child. Hopefully, we are getting tax throws now. Beyond these difficulties of two thousand and eleven, progress was made in some areas, and some of the highlights in these areas are as follows. Discussion concerning our reservoir debt and potential improvements to our water and wastewater systems continued this past year, but with little progress, although I do feel that we may have laid the foundation for progress in the very short upcoming months. We made some headway in our discussion with Cherokee Water and Sewer Authority concerning the possibility of a merger with Water and Wastewater Systems. The direction we take will be a decision of this council in the next few short months. I think we're going to know which way we'll go very shortly. Regarding our finances, we have continued to reduce our original long-term debt during two thousand and eleven, such that now we have reduced the original debt of more than sixty-two million dollars by more than fifteen million dollars. Our financial management has steadily improved as well. Although our tax digest declines with real estate values going down, we have tightened our belts and made budgetary adjustments without raising taxes. We will work to keep taxes as low as possible and yet meet our service and delivery obligations. While there is talk of eliminating the senior home state exemption, just so there's no misunderstanding, this idea will go nowhere and is a waste of the council's time to consider discussing. Seniors are an important part of our community, and we must recognize the value of seniors to our community. It's not just social values, but financial value as well. The golf course was leased during two thousand and eleven. We're ready for that. We were happy to do that. But we still continue to pay three hundred thousand dollars per year for the golf course with no revenue stream from the project. From a financial standpoint, in my opinion, four years ago, our city was on life support. We now have begun to transition to a financial position toward, our financial position toward good fiscal health. A couple of areas to watch that could have an effect on our city finances include potential changes in the impact fee and stormwater ordinances. More will be discussed about this, and you'll hear more about this as the time goes on during the year. Last year, we implemented the Blackboard Emergency Notification System very successfully. This year, we will be changing to what's called a Code Red system, which is a more widely-recognized system and one which will allow for a more targeted approach to emergency notification. We have begun to make progress on our comprehensive fire protection plan and possible funding source for new fire stations. I am recommending a bond referendum in July for our plan, and we should call that Plan Achieve Three. We need to reduce our ISO reading to a three, and we need to do whatever it takes to achieve that. Plans have been developed and in construction for our new hospital, our regional hospital and support services, which should begin by early summer, so that access to even better healthcare for our citizens is just around the corner. Months ago, our council approved the construction of a canoe launch on the Etowah River in the area near the proposed Etowah River Park. This construction should be underway soon at no cost to the city. Fishing and canoeing on Higbee Log Reservoir should begin soon, hopefully by early spring, as we continue to locate a public-access park area near the reservoir. Now, while the Etowah River Park is way behind the original schedule due to no fall of the city, some progress has been made, and this park should be under construction late this Regarding our streets, the Walaskas Street LCI project, which is a street skate project from the railroad street up, from the railroad up to North Street, should begin this spring. We're really very close to, it's already been bid, so the work should begin very, very shortly. What has happened to the improvements on State Route Twenty along Canton Marketplace? It's my understanding that from the DOT, that construction is to begin around two thousand and fourteen with completion by two thousand and sixteen. Perhaps we should consider, down the road, a moratorium on some permits from I-575 to the city limits until this section is approved by the DOT. We should not allow this situation to worsen. We now have a private street assessment committee, which has already been meaning to resolve the issue of how our city deals with private streets and those streets which are not, were not completed by developers or which the city has no funds or funds to complete. This is no small number of streets. We are continuing to move forward with plans to resurface and improve a number of streets in our city this year. Two thousand and eleven saw the strengthening of our ethics ordinance. We will continue to strengthen this ordinance in two thousand and twelve. Public trust of elected officials and public staff is important to moving this city forward. While I believe customer service has improved slightly, we still have a long way to go. Phones should be answered by human beings. Citizen inquiries should be responded to in a timely manner by each and every department. Citizens should always be treated with courtesy and respect. It should be a rare occasion indeed when we leave a customer dissatisfied when we have not only the responsibility, but the ability to help and go the extra mile. I challenge our city manager and council to get a phone system at City Hall which will meet the needs of this city and its residents. I don't like to hear a machine personally. Our fifteen-member citizens charter study committee completed its work during two thousand and eleven. Now I have appointed a council charter review committee to work with representatives of the citizen committee to bring forth recommendations directly to council for improving our charter, which will improve the efficiency of operation of our city. Our charter review committee and this council will create the pathway to address many of the issues of this city. I, along with this council, need to work hard at improving our city rather than tearing it down. Living in this city is a choice, and in my opinion, a privilege. It is a choice of those who want better emergency services, including fire protection with lower insurance rates, more intense police protection with a greater ratio of officers per square mile. Canton is also a choice of those who wish to adhere to shopping, dining, theater, and parks, and of course, good, clean water, hopefully at a reasonable price. The city is also the choice of those who want government closer rather than more distant and less personal. While I may not be satisfied with our overall progress, this doesn't mean I want to dissolve our city. Just so there's no lack of clarity regarding my position, the idea of total city-county government consolidation is a dead issue and will not be a distraction to this council's business. The good news is that we can expect the level and rate of progress in two thousand and twelve to compensate for the lack of progress on major issues in two thousand and eleven. I would like to thank our city employees and staff and all who have served on boards, authorities, and committees for your efforts this past year. While it may not take a village to keep our city going, it does take a lot of dedicated support of this city by staff and citizens alike. I want to thank you for that support. I do not like the sense of inertia, the inertia I frequently feel when I walk into City Hall. I often feel like we're crawling at a snail's pace, but two thousand and eleven is behind us now. Two thousand and twelve is truly a new beginning and an opportunity for us all. There is hope, there's optimism, and there's enthusiasm in this community and on this council for this city. The clouds which had gathered over the city in two thousand and eleven have broken, and there is definitely a brighter day ahead in two thousand and twelve. Someday, the economy will recover. I want us to work hard now to be ready and ahead of the game for what can be an excellent future for our city. As you can see, our city is improving. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, do you have anything?
I've noticed that the vast majority of the audience is here for probably two issues that are very way down in the bottom of the agenda. We have a lot of young families and children here. I would like to make a motion that we adjust the agenda to push those two items up to next, and that'll be item eight, senior property tax exemption, and item nine, eight, out of respect for our citizens here, it's a way to get those lines. I would like to make that motion that we adjust the agenda accordingly.
Mr. Mayor?
We do have a motion, and the second there, that we move up out of eight B, is that correct?
Nine B.
It's nine B.
Eight B and nine A.
Eight B and nine A.
Oh, nine and eight. Nine and eight. Oh, I got a.
Nine B and ten A. Yeah, that's not what's on my.
Five versions of the agenda.
Oh, okay. I got you. Okay, we have a motion that we move up. Okay, we have a motion that we move up the discussion of nine B, which is a discussion of elimination of senior property tax, and ten A, reduction of water bill rates. Do we have a second? Do we have any other discussion?
Second.
Can we have a motion and a second? Any other discussion? If not, those who favor senior property tax, I oppose no. All members voted for the motion. Okay, we will go, we will move up at this point, nine B, discussion of elimination of senior property tax.
Mr. Bryan. Mr. Bryan, I've worked hard on a little presentation. If it's all right, I'm going to go to the podium and make the motion, and then I'll sit back down.
Okay.
Discussion. Besides that, I'd hate for my friend John to get hit by some rocks through the projectile. I thank you all for coming tonight. I'm not a very good speech maker, so I'm going to do my best to sound like I'm not reading it, but I will be reading it. A democracy will continue to exist up until the time that voters discover that they can vote themselves generous gifts from the public treasury. From that moment on, the majority always votes for the candidates who promise the most benefits from the public treasury, with the result that every democracy will finally collapse due to loose fiscal policy. Last year, 1,231 households paid either no property tax or in some cases paid a disproportionately small amount. Three years ago, this figure was 1,057, an increase of 174 households in three years. Already this year, an additional 102 households have applied for this exemption, bringing the total to 1,332 households so far this year. Three years ago, the cost to the taxpayers for this exemption was $518,000 and change. Last year, the cost to the taxpayers was $601,000. While these cost figures were rising, Canton's overall property tax revenues were falling to almost a half a billion, $477,000. In FY10, total revenues were down by 22.5%. All these figures came directly from our audited financial statements. Do you see where we're going? Who's going to pay for the services we all receive? With the current trends, the question is, is not if, but when will it collapse? Five of the seven of us here, elected officials who govern the city, are on the exemption program. The combined appraisals of the five households that are on the exemption program is $1,204,300. Between those five households, they paid a grand total of $118 in property taxes. Five households worth 1.2 million. If the city was dependent on your elected officials to pay their fair share, it would already have collapsed. I only share this information to show you the future of our city. Two households paying for seven. That's what's coming. Some say seniors spend money in the community. Well, of course, that's true. It's also true that hardworking families raising children spend money in the community. And seniors who do not own property spend money in the community. And they pay for the municipal services they receive through their rents, and I dare say, a large majority of those seniors are the ones that are down at the senior center collecting food stamps and being helped by the very gracious and generous well-off seniors. Those folks that live in rundown rental properties are paying through their rents. Some may say, if we take away the exemption, seniors will stop moving to Canton. Really? Saving one or two bucks a day in property taxes will seriously affect the decision to purchase a $200,000, $300,000, or $400,000 house. Well, a person who lets that affect that decision ain't going to be spending a lot of money out in the community, I can tell you that. Some may say making us pay property taxes is a breach of contract. The exemption was a deciding factor in us moving to Canton. Again, I must say, really? I've yet to see a contract where the city of Canton agreed to give anybody free services for life. Some might say they got their homes paid off, and all of a sudden, you decide to start taxing them. It could have a very serious impact on whether or not they can buy medications because their incomes are severely limited. Well, I'm having a little trouble believing that folks living in a $300,000 home or even a $150,000 home are going to become financially strapped about paying one or two bucks a day for violent police protection, roads parks, and the other services that they receive. Again, the poorest homeowners are still paid. The poorest of the poor get no break. They're still paying for it. Another popular argument is, we've worked hard and paid taxes all our lives. We deserve a break. Well, there's a couple of problems with that. Yes, the senior homeowners have worked hard and paid taxes, and so have the lower-income seniors who rent, so have the seniors in assisted living and nursing homes, but they don't get a break in Canton. Only those who own homes get a break. Additionally, senior homeowners already get a huge break in Cherokee County for paying school taxes, and they pay no state property taxes. The Georgia retirement income exclusion for those 62 and up is tremendous and increasing every year. Seniors get plenty of well-deserved breaks, well-deserved breaks. Folks, it's my belief that I was elected to represent all citizens of Canton, not just a select group. This is not an attack on senior citizens. This is not even an attack on senior homeowner citizens. This is just me doing the job I was elected to do. I've clearly identified a $600,000 hemorrhage in the public treasury that is growing every year. Currently, this represents about 14% of our real property tax collections. Tonight, I'm offering two viable ways that you can stop this huge leak in the taxpayers' treasury. You could just eliminate it tonight with a vote, except that five out of seven would violate the ethics ordinance when you vote to keep the exemption. So the better solution, let the taxpayers decide for themselves. Therefore, I make a motion to adopt a resolution requesting the Board of Elections to call a special election to place in conjunction with the general election to be held November 6, 2012. The question on the ballot would state, should the city of Canton continue to offer a property tax exemption to homeowners age 62 and older on their primary residence of devaluation of $280,000? Yes or no?
Was that a motion?
I believe that was a motion.
I'll second that motion, but I just want to say, in the spirit of supporting a second in motion, I had to put up with the entire 2011 year by having motions made and never had seconds because I was shut out. But to show you the spirit of what you're asking, I'm willing to step up and say, I'll second your motion, but it should be for discussion.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, sir. We have a motion and a second. I'll put it up for discussion.
Mr. Mayor, as a point of order, which I allow, without calling a point of order, the procedure is to make a motion, a second, and then go into discussion. We allow Mr. Bryan the opportunity to present his discussion before the motion, but I allowed it because the people over here have a great interest in that. My contrary viewpoint is as follows. I'm not going to look at why seniors should have it or shouldn't have it, but I'm going to look at what they bring to the community. One of the main considerations made by seniors when relocating is property taxes levy and exemptions available. Elimination of this exemption will discourage seniors from locating within our city. Current seniors will consider moving to a more tax-friendly area. The aging of our population trend will increase the demand on developers to build to meet these needs. Developers today are building communities that address multiple demographic needs. The removal of a senior exemption will cause developers to build elsewhere. How many construction jobs will be lost in our city? How many restaurants will see a decline in their revenues? How many employees will get laid off from restaurants, from Home Depot, Lowe's, et cetera, because the seniors are no longer have the discretionary income to spend at these locations? Instead, they're paying a property tax. Many seniors have saved their whole life to own their homes with minimal or no mortgage. That's what a lot of young people are doing today. They're paying their mortgages with the anticipation that eventually they will have a home free and clear. These same seniors live on fixed incomes, and a greater percentage of disposable income goes to discretionary spending. How much business will be lost by the local businesses because the seniors will be forced to pay a property tax rather than support local merchants? How would the lost business affect the employment level of these businesses? I don't know the answer to these questions, but these are all very important questions to answer. Many community service organizations depend upon volunteers to serve in the provision of service to others in the community. Seniors compose the majority of these volunteers. What would happen to Meals on Wheels if it were not for senior volunteers? Has anyone here considered asking Northside Hospital how a decreasing senior population due to a negative senior tax possibility would affect their plans for growth? Would they continue along their plans for development of a new hospital facility if they thought that the seniors were, for example, choosing to locate nearer to Wellstar Kennystone Hospital because of the unfriendly senior tax policy of Canton? These are just a few of the questions that must be answered and considered before we rush off to jump to a short-sighted conclusion. I believe that senior exemptions are analogous to priming the pump. You put a little water in the exemption into the pump to obtain the water, jobs, and meaningful growth. Thank you.
I think Councilman Bryan has definitely pointed out some leaks that are critical, and somehow or another, we might want to take a deeper look into it, just as Councilman Cummings talked about. But both have taken an extreme on one side or the other side, and frankly, I think a better way to look at this is, the age of 62, which is a threshold, was one that was probably established many, many years ago. Today, because of all our improved health resources, we're living longer and we're working longer, as we've seen Social Security start inching up from 65 to 66 and so forth. I think a better way to look at it is to grandfather the people who have presently achieved that level, and then gradually move up the scale over several years, rather than putting an extreme hardship on the community, on our businesses, as Mr. Cummings pointed out, and just try to soften it and stop the leakage there, where it won't be painful. It might delay, it might delays a group from obtaining that benefit a year or so, but there again, it won't be such a shock to our community if we should do so. Thank you.
Good terminology, leakage. The biggest leakage we have in this city is the reservoir. And we stop bleeding at the reservoir and get rid of it, whatever we need to do to get out from beneath that burden, I don't think we'll have to worry about what the senior citizens are being given. I know using that as a questionable word. I think that's what we need to press on. We are working on it. We're trying to move on to get the reservoir resolved, and once that's gone, we're going to see some major changes. Thank you.
Mr. President? Mr. Mayor, if you'll excuse the pun to hook on Mr. Huffman's comments, there is another way, and I'm not making a motion of this, but the other thing is, when I first moved here, the appraisal of my house was such that I would pay a small amount of property tax. Actually, the first two years, I didn't realize we had a senior exemption, and I paid the whole thing. But anyway, and when I did finally apply for the senior exemption, at the same time, my property value diminished, so that I wound up paying no taxes the second year or the third year. So what I'm suggesting is that one way council should look at it, and this is a subject that we should study at greater depth, not just tonight, is that there's a possibility we could reduce the senior exemption to parallel what the reduction in property tax values have been in the last couple of years. In my case, it was 13%, which reduced it down to 250 instead of 280. This would raise additional revenues that seniors probably would have been paying had they stayed here, I mean, had the property values not gone down, but also with the proviso that if the property tax values go up, that the same percentage be applied to the senior exemption that need increase along the way. Thank you.
You know, this issue was decided by referendum quite a few years ago. As far as I can determine, it's a decided issue. I think that people voted for it, it passed, and, you know, are we going to, every time we change direction or have a downturn in the economy, or an upturn, are we going to go back to the voters again? I tend to think that, you know, there are ways that we will raise revenue that will not have to impact the seniors, in my opinion. One thing that Mr. Bryan said was that only those who own homes get a tax break. Well, we know that is not the case. We know that there are people get conservation exemptions on vacant land inside the city, and when you do that, that's a tax break. There's, everybody that wants to own a home can also get a regular homestead exemption to $4,000, I guess it is. So a lot of people are getting breaks there, but I personally don't think it's asking too much for seniors to get that break. The other thing was that Mr. Bryan indicated that it would be a violation of the ethics ordinance for anyone on here getting that exemption to vote on the issue. If that were the case, we couldn't even send him any train. That's simply not the case. But anyway, is there any other discussion? You want to have any other?
Yes. There's, I brought my personal residence, my primary residence tax bill here because there's been, twice now, some insinuation that I'm getting some kind of special tax break.
break. My home is on a half acre. The appraisal is $142,500, and I paid $387.60 in city taxes. A fair appraisal, a fair assessment for a house that's on a half acre. The misconception is that I sit on the board of directors for an organization that does own a conservation easement in the city. I'm, I've also been a trustee in my church, and I've been an officer in the Canton Lions Club. All those organizations enjoy tax incentives as given by the federal government. On the conservation easement, the landowners pay the appraised value, full value. It just happens that the appraisal is lower than it would be if the land was used to its highest and best use. So number one, I do want to clear that misconception up. I pay my taxes right here, and I pay my county taxes. On this thing about the ethics ordinance, out of respect for the council here, I didn't, I chose to not ask y'all to give this exemption because of what it says here. It says right here, Section 2-5-1, "It is essential to the proper administration and operation of the city that the members of its governing authority be, and give the appearance of being independent, impartial, that public office not be used for private gain." Section 2-5-3, "No member of the governing authority shall use his or her official position to attempt to secure privileges that are not available to the general public." I'm no attorney, but I do know that the general public does not have the ability to get free services from the city of Canton, only those 62 and older. I checked with the city attorney, this is an absolute opportunity for an ethics charge to be made, and then it would go to Superior Court. Nobody truly knows what the judge would rule, but I believe you would be given the appearance of giving yourself a special deal if you said, "I'm going to vote to not have to pay property taxes," but most of y'all do. So I don't want to ask y'all to do that. Again, I'm just asking you to allow this issue to be revisited by the citizens because circumstances have changed. I agree. We don't need to be running out to a referendum every time something happens, but back, what, 15 or so years ago, was it about 15 years ago when the thing was voted in? Roughly, probably. Times were good. Every year, the tax digest increased, increased, increased. Well, last year was the first year it dropped. I'm talking about the collections. I'm talking about the actual dollars coming in from property taxes. It dropped by almost half a million dollars. That's disturbing. Our overall revenue of the city dropped by 22 and 1/2 percent. It's right in our financial report. Most of that was due to grants being cut out, but the point is, it's dropping drastically, and the senior exemption is growing rapidly. Let the voters decide, and maybe this quotation that I pulled off the Internet today will be proven to be not true, but right now, it's happening. We have the ability to give ourselves generous gifts from the public treasury, and that's what we're doing. So please, just let's let the public decide in the November election, and maybe in the meantime, we can come up with a better solution like what Mr. Huffman and Mr. Rushman suggested, and we won't have to have it on the ballot. But if we put ourselves under some pressure and a time limit, we'll get it done. If we don't, just like most everything else, we'll pedal around with it for years and nothing will happen. So please, let's just put it on the ballot and let the people decide. Thank you.
Mr. Huffman.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, two quick things. One, there's a motion on the floor for a referendum for yes or no. The way it's stated, I don't have to vote no. The second thing I'd like to ask is, I'd like to have our city attorney give his opinion on the comments or the question of whether it's legal for us to vote on such an issue.
Before he does, before he answers. You know, one of the things that you were referring to in your address earlier this evening was about the process that this city has been going through for a number of years. And it seems like every time the council is faced with a hard decision, the first thing that pops up is, "Let's throw it back to the citizens. Let the citizens decide." The citizens decided when they voted us into office. Like it or not, after we're here, it is our charge, ask council members to make hard decisions. And I'm not going to be running around worried about the ethic issue that you were trying to point out is wrong, and we cannot operate if that comes down as a pure black and white. We should, and I would look to our city manager, I mean, attorney, to give us some input.
Before we do that, Mr. Goodman.
Yes, I want to ask our attorney, I received an email that said that this was not voted, this was not a referendum issue, that it was a vote in by the council several years ago. I just was curious if you knew.
I don't know. Factually, I just know that legally it couldn't have been. That state constitution requires all property, I mean, all tax exemptions be approved by referendum. So I assume, I vaguely remember voting on it, but I may have voted in the county. I'm not, but it should have been by referendum, so if it wasn't, then it's not a valid exemption.
Yes, one last question. Does that mean that if we wanted to make any modifications to it, it would have to be done by referendum?
I think you're right. Unification or elimination, either one would have to be done by referendum. If you propose a change to it by referendum.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, and I think we ought to go ahead and have a motion in a second, and the motion is to authorize a resolution for a referendum to vote either for or against the implementation, the continuation, I guess, of the senior exemption, homestead exemption.
Mr. Mayor. In this particular vote, I call for a roll call vote, please, so that everybody knows how individually we stand.
Okay. All right. We will go ahead and vote on that issue. Mr. Bashford?
No.
Mr. Bryan?
Yes.
Mr. Huffman?
No.
Mr. Goodman?
No.
Mr. Rush?
No.
Mr. Cummings?
No.
All right, motion fails. The next item we agreed to move up was the discussion of the reduction of water and sewer rates. And I want to say something, but before we get started here, is that back, back when we were looking at raising rates, and shortly thereafter, we discussed rolling those, actually rolling those back to the county rates early on. And, you know, I thought it might be a good idea, but then it was pointed out very clearly at that time that we didn't really have the, enough financial information to make that decision at that point. My position would be that once we have that, and I understand from our CFO, that perhaps by the end of next month, we will know what that price rate increase that we implemented, what its effect actually is, and along with the, you know, truncating, rounding off situation there on the water bills, on the usage. And at that point, in my opinion, I would certainly favor take a look at it. If we were getting more money than we were supposed to be getting in order to meet our debt service on that reservoir, then I'd certainly favor rolling back. But until that time, I think, I just don't think the information is quite there at this point, but it should be forthcoming soon.
Mr. Mayor. As chairman of the Water and Sewer Rate Committee, we have been discussing this, I'm sorry, Mr. Bryan, because missed a number of council meetings where we had discussed these issues. There are programs, as the mayor alluded to, that we're looking at. We are not going to rush head-on and make a snap decision. We are going to get some hard numbers. We had to get the big problem of the billing situation squared away. That is well underway, and we will have some good, solid months where we can make a good decision, and then we will seriously look at rolling it back.
Point of order, Mayor?
Yes.
We have no motion, but we're having discussion. So I think we need to have Mr. Bryan make his motion first.
He doesn't say a motion, it says a discussion.
Well, I have a motion written down. I do want to make, and I'll make the motion, and we can discuss it. My motion is to immediately adjust Canton's water and sewer rates to match those of Cherokee County.
Second. Now, you discuss, you have anything, anyone else?
Well, I, Mr. Mayor, I would concur with what you said. We raise the rates because we have bills to pay. And until we know how much money we have to pay those bills, I think it's foolhardy to roll back the rates, and then at the tail end of the accounting, when we find out we need a whole bunch of money, we're going to raise it even higher. So I think we should just hold our ground until we know where we stand. Mr. Mayor. Mr. Cummings?
Reduction of water and sewer rates. First of all, I'd like the word reduction used instead of rollback that is previously used. Everyone should understand that water and sewer rates are directly determined based upon the costs incurred to provide those services. In order to determine what our rate should be, we have to know what the cost of providing these services is. As, or our, excuse me, as discussed by the Water and Sewer Committee in December at the council meeting, they decided to delay discussion because they had insufficient data in which to make a decision. At the last meeting on January 5th, I questioned Mr. Wood if the revenue to date collections in the water and sewer was skewed because of our billing issues, and he confirmed that they were and expected them to level out. He further concurred that we had insufficient data at that point in time in order to discuss any adjustments. I am in favor of having the lowest possible rates, but those rates have to be derived from a known analysis, not just an assumption. We have several events that are going to impact the needed revenue during this year. The first is known. We have a $600,000 loan to repay from last year when we borrowed to cover a shortfall. Secondly, we are under a consent order from the EPD, and the city will have to make a significant investment in the water recovery plant to meet the EPD standards. The amount of this investment and its impact on sewer rates is unknown. Thirdly, the contract with utility partners is expiring, and we must either renew with them or obtain another vendor. We do not have a cost figure for this contract, and because it is a significant part of the overall cost of water and sewer services, we cannot calculate our costs. Mr. Bryan's idea is good, but it's premature, premature for discussion. I propose postponing this discussion till we have all the cost factors known, and we can make an informed decision that we won't have to reverse several months later. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me justify my motion, and I'll shut up about it. The terminology I used, Mr. Cummings, was adjust. The motion said immediately adjust Canton's water and sewer rates to match those of the county. That $600,000 figure just keeps coming up, and that we got to pay back $600,000. Anyway, I was one of the ones advocating raising the rates. I did a detailed presentation up there, PowerPoint, had all the figures from the Rattella Study, from the studies we had done internally back seven or eight months ago, justifying why we should raise the rates. We did raise the rates, I think based a lot on what I said, the facts and figures. They've changed since then. They're going to change again. What if we have a drought? What if we have a lot of rain? What if the economy picks up, people start using more water? What if, what if? The Cherokee Water and Sewer Authority is one of the most well-managed water systems in the state. I don't think anybody would deny that. Those people know what they're doing. We don't. I, you know, I've been here three years. We do not know what we're doing with our water and sewer. We're doing really good. We need it to come out of the tap. Most times when you turn the valve, a lot of times it'll go away when you flush the toilet. Sometimes it runs out in the street, but most times it goes to the plant, except when it rains and it runs out into the river. So I propose put ourselves under a little more pressure. Let's just put the rates, it's not that much difference. It's, it's only about $20 for a four-person household. If Cherokee County, the national average usage is going to be 12,000 gallons for a four-person household, that's going to be a difference of $23.55 between Canton and Cherokee County. On our average, which is about 8,000 or 9,000 gallons for a four-person household, the difference is going to be $16.25. Let's show our citizens we're serious about this. I'm not going to just keep on kicking it down the road and thinking and... Glad, I am glad you're bringing your business experience and expertise here, but, I mean, you're going to see, it's a moving target. It's just changing all the time. Let's nail something down, let's draw a line in the sand and say, "If Cherokee County can do it, we can do it. If we can't do it, let's get out of the business." And I agree with John, first thing to do is get rid of that boondoggle that costs six times as much as what it was supposed to cost called the reservoir. We'll still be able to fish and ride boats around on it, no matter who owns it. So let's get rid of that thing. But right now, tonight, please, let's just match these rates, show our citizens we're serious about it, put ourselves under some pressure and do this. Thank you.
Mr. Bashford?
Thank you. Once again, my good colleague come forth with some good ideas, some concepts. Problem is, you're missing a key point. Yeah, we have been negotiating with Cherokee County, and the interesting thing is, they'd love to sell us the water and take care of our sewage, but we must maintain the distribution lines. Now, all of a sudden, we can get those rates, yet we still have to pay for the distribution lines, which is at a cost. So what are we gaining? We're throwing this over here and we end up. So we are looking, and I would love for you to come to one of our water committee meetings, sit in on it, and give some input. But I think it's important to have the whole picture versus throwing out ideas without having the total concept, what's going on. And again, Mr. Cummings is working some good details, so let's keep it.
Mr. Huffman?
Now, again, I'm one that doesn't want to, I won't see things move fast, but I don't want to rush into this one because we've, we've made mistakes all along during the past year. And we're close to having some good, hard, accurate, I guess, what else can you describe it, uh, facts to where the mind like Glenn Cummings got to come up with some very reasonable, well, logical numbers that we can make some decisions on. And I don't know where this particular document came from that was handed out today to us, but I see where the city of Waleska, we sell them water. Am I correct in that, Mayor?
Yes, sir, yes. I suspect the county sells them water, the, go ahead.
Are we, are we charging, are we charging them the right amount when we go up on our citizens here? Do we go up on the city of Waleska at the same time? I don't know if that's a contractual thing.
Pay wholesale rate, which is actually higher, I think, but, but still, and they have the retailers after that.
Yeah, but you look at some of these rates down here, Etowah's $28, Ball Ground is $23.90, and they're $17.44, and they're buying it and reselling, and they're still below. Is there room there that I think, I don't know how many citizens up there are using our water? It could be the college. They should be, they should be carrying their share of the load here. So anyhow, my point is, is that we're too close to having good information. The month of January is just about completed. If we have February, Mr. Cummings has done a great job, and I think we should at least wait until February to figure this out.
I think we don't need to make a decision without having the basis to do so. And I think just to pick out Cherokee County and say, "We want to go there," and to, we want to price what an entity who is, you know, probably 10 times our size, and say, "We want Canton to be sure to be just as efficient as an entity 10 times our size," probably not going to quite happen. But that's just sort of a guesswork, and I've run And I'd rather have the January and February figures, the water billing has stabilized, hopefully to some degree, and we will get some good data from which to make a decision. And I, as much as anyone else, would love to see a reduction in water and sewer rates. And I think, I think it might happen, but I think we need the basis to actually do that. Mr. Mayor. Oh, March, okay.
I know everyone on this council is concerned about water pricing. We have, Mr. Bryan actually made a statement, and we went up on these rates a few months ago. And he hoped that this would stabilize and we'd be able to give this back. We would be able to roll back our pricing. Everyone on our council, man and our current new council, agrees with that. I talked with Melissa two days ago, and she is actually still going through billing, trying to get these figures for us. I know we're close to getting that, and I think it is an important thing that we do roll these back if we're able to, but we need all the facts. We don't need to do it now and then have to change it again. I think we make one thing and then we'll be there.
Okay, Mr. Cummings, and then let's kind of...
Mr. Mayor, I respectfully ask Mr. Bryan to remove his motion or reverse his motion and postpone it until that time at which we have sufficient data to make a decision.
I was actually going to address that possibility, just kind of an informal head nod, because obviously my motion is not going to pass. But if we are to morate rates, roll back the rates in the next few months to come based on these studies, would you guys be willing to actually issue refunds from this night forward to the people who have been waiting for years for something to happen? Would y'all be willing to do that, just to, you know? I mean, I'm going to draw the motion if I've got some...
I just respond, we had a couple of months ago where we had a number of customers who were under billed for a number of months, and we said that we wouldn't go back and backbill them, so I don't think we should be issuing any refunds either. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to call a question.
Okay. We have a motion and a second on it today. Anyhow, okay, those in favor signify and say?
Restate the question.
I'll restate the motion.
I'll read it to you.
Go ahead.
Immediately adjust Canton's water and sewer rates to match those of Cherokee County.
Okay, that's a motion. Those in favor of that signify and say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? No?
No.
All members voting for the motion, exception, Mr. Bryan. Oh, all in one, okay. Turn it around, okay. The motion did not carry. Okay, now we can go back toward the beginning of the meeting.
We need to approve the agenda.
I think he did what he asked for, the modification of the agenda by moving the two items forward. We did approve the agenda at the same time.
Okay, item number seven, minutes, the minutes from January the 5th and the minutes from November 17th still need to be approved. Are there any changes to those minutes?
Make a motion and we approve those minutes.
Make a motion, a second, we approve the minutes. Any other questions? If not, do you have a change?
Mr. Huffman and I have to refrain from approving the minutes of November 17th.
Sure. Okay. All right. Well, then let's take them one at a time, I guess, then, right? You're saying from November the 17th, minutes?
Yes, sir.
Okay, for the approval of the January 5th minutes, those in favor signify and say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no? Okay. For the approval of the November 17th minutes, Mr. Huffman and Mr. Cummings will abstain from that. Those in favor signify and say aye. Are opposed, no? All members voted for the motion, we accept the extension. Under the consent agenda, we have the November financials. I will read these, and once complete, if there are any that need to be removed from the consent agenda for further discussion, we will do that. Decision to file exempt us Commerce, Little, Large Station 1400 to 2600. The action to approve the community garden at Big Oak, Big Oak Drive. Discussion and possible action on emergency notification system, this is code RED. The action to approve $50 per month per council member and for mayor as cell phone allowance. Item F, authorization for Nathan Eagle to sign checks, our CFO. Item G, approval of lease agreement, copier fleet with duplicating products and authorization for mayor to sign agreement, action needed. Request for beer and wine pouring license. Andrew Bain has applied for beer and wine pouring license for Johnny's Pizza, Suite 10559, Riverstone Parkway. A request for beer and wine package license for Sunil Valji has applied to Canton for beer and wine package license for Crossroads Inc., located at 180 Burt Butterworth Road. Item J, adoption of the resolution to adopt a leak adjustment policy. And item K, adoption of amended water billing ordinance.
Mr. Mayor. On J and K, I have to come up and table those items.
Okay. We have a motion to table J and K.
You want to just remove them?
Okay. All right, we will, we will remove those, item J and K.
Mr. Mayor, I think that items C and D probably are going to require detailed motions, and she probably should be handled individually.
C and D?
Since we don't identify code RED as being, I may have to make a motion to identify.
We will remove items C, D, and, oops. J and K, C, D, J and K. On the agenda. Any other items to be removed? If not, those in favor are approving the consent agenda with those items, C, D, J and K, removed. Signify and say aye. Are opposed, no. All members voting for the motion. Okay.
I haven't made a motion. You called for a vote, but I'm not sure if I have made like a motion to approve.
Motion is second. Motion is second to approve the consent agenda. Those in favor signify and say aye. Are opposed, no. Thank you.
She wasn't aware, didn't put down, didn't make a motion.
We give our support. Okay, item C.
Mr. Mayor, I have that being removed because of the discussion. But what I think the motion would have to be is, if you were to approve the concept, is moved to approve. Doing an agreement with somebody, well, I'm sure I would tend to be with an authority mayor to sign, so we don't have to bring that contract back.
My understanding is that the contract would be with Lane Wood, whose business is Canton Victory Garden is the information that I would see.
I'll just have to give him this one, some of the details then, but my intent that I have would be to do it like we did with the dog park and make a management agreement. You approve the concept, I'll try to have the mayor to sign, and we'll want it to come back.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Motion is second. Any other discussion or questions? If not, those in favor signify and say aye. Are opposed, no. All members voting for the motion. Item D, discussion of possible action on emergency notification system, code RED. If you want to discuss that.
No, I'll make a motion and we...
Okay.
We are right now in a situation where we need to have that meeting.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Well, there's been some discussion about whether or not that contract would be one year or three years. So, you need to decide the term that you want it to be.
It is three years contracted. Now, like right now, it's a three-year contract. It does have the possibility of some termination after one year, but it's restricted.
It's not anymore. We've had a conversation with them yesterday, and there are no restrictions on a terminated contract. There's some financial difference. The average, the average cost over three years would be about $885 per year higher if you went with a guaranteed three-year contract versus if you went with a one-year contract and stayed in years two and three. Does that make sense? If you went with a guaranteed three-year contract, you would be paying plus or minus $2,500 less over the three years than if you went with a one-year but stayed in it for a three-year period. Question is, can we legally do a three-year contract over the scope of one year? You just want to go for one.
Yeah, that's what I understand. I haven't seen the change, but if it's been changed, then the options are three years or three years, but the option to get out after one year. And they're going to charge more in two to three to stay in. But, yeah, the answer to your question, Mr. Mayor, is would a three-year contract be legal? I think in this circumstance where it's a service, it probably would be. It's a proprietary function, so it would be okay.
All right, we have, we have, we have a motion and a second. Was it for a one-year contract?
Mr. Wood?
Yes, sir.
Your recommendation?
My recommendation would be one year with the intention of...
Yeah, it's one year of a motion.
Of a motion.
I'm sorry, there should be a written contract we're voting on. And as my understanding, the written contract is going to say it's a three-year contract that we can get out after one year, or the one year that we can choose to reden.
Well, what I'm telling you is, as of yesterday, they have stated to us they would give us a one-year contract.
Going over two and three, that's not going to be the contract?
No, I'm talking about the financial difference if you stay years two and three.
It's just a one-year contract, no renewals, no anything else. That went good.
I don't know if it's, if it's a three-year contract and you can get out in one year, then it serves the same purpose. So, if it's three years and you can get out after one year, or if it's flat one year, depending on how it comes back and is filed in written form, I guess.
My motion is for a one-year contract.
New or not?
With options for years two and three, and that fact satisfies the desire for a contract. When the contract gets signed, it needs to match the motion. That's all that's left.
If we don't know what the contract is, I don't think we should vote on it. I mean, if we don't know if it's three years or one year, I mean, it would, it makes a little more sense to know what we're voting on.
No, I say, I'm calling for a one-year contract. If we don't know, we're going to meet next week. Then we can start a voting session.
Are we out of an emergency notification system as of this date?
Yes, we are, as of this month. And we had tornadoes in the...
Denied, denied.
Yeah. It's a one-year contract, that's what I'm calling for a motion.
Okay.
And it's straight-up stuff once you get it.
Okay, any other discussion? Those in favor signify and say aye. Are opposed, no? All members voting for the motion. One-year contract, hoopla in. Okay, um, let's see, move back to J. Item J, adoption of resolution, resolution to the Department of Lea, the general...
That's been removed.
Oh, you wanted, that was actually not just removed on the consent order, but...
We've got to get some more.
We ended the agenda in order to remove that. Have we done that?
They just moved it to postpone it to next month.
To next month? Okay.
So, the motion to postpone it.
It needs to be second voted on.
Second. We have a motion and a second to postpone it next month, items J and K. Those in favor signify and say aye. Are opposed, no?
All members voting for the motion.
All right, now we are. Item A, okay. Discussion and possible action on the comprehensive fire protection plan. I believe as we left the meeting, the last meeting, Mr. Wood was going to continue to pursue locating, along with the fire chief and ISO consultant. Something we need to do regardless of how we end up funding or building a new fire station. We needed this, and we needed a plan out there to tell us what we need to do. So, Mr. Wood, you know, we'll go where we are on that. The chief and I met last week with a Georgia-based consultant. Based on our discussions subsequent to that interview, we both felt pretty good about that particular consultant. And I asked for some reference information and some other information, such as who, by name, specific name and profile would be, wanting to develop our ISO recommendations. Upon receiving that information earlier this week and then through the process of checking some of those references, I had fully intended to make a recommendation to council tonight that you agree to contract award for a consultant. But based on some of the reference information that's come back, I'm not fully prepared to do that. So, we will do everything we can to keep that process moving. I think Chief Floyd is in agreement with me that we not offer a recommendation tonight.
Mr. Wood, a competent consultant.
That consultant would have been 25,000 to 30,000 range. Anyway, that's that question there. I would like to see us kind of set up a timeframe here, maybe the middle of February or something, we would have somebody on board. We have gotten a, if, for instance, if we were to choose to build a referendum out if that seemed to be the way the council chooses in the future, we do have a schedule that would have to be met from January Monday at the elections department in order to get it on the ballot in, at the general primary election in July. So, I mean, there are schedules and timeframes and things you have to do follow with the elections department within certain timeframes, or it won't be on there. We have to provide resolutions and everything else to do that. I think there's one other point, too, Mr. Mayor, that is that we've got an ISO review that's going to be coming in here as early as next month. So, we have every reason to want to keep this process moving as fast as we can.
We've been out of an ISO review?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, it looks like April is our time to make the decision. We get on July.
Okay. So, we need to do that pretty quickly, so we need to...
Actually, I'm sorry, it looks like we got to do it at the end, March, before the end of work. Because it's April 9th.
We have two months to get that decision done and get it to the election definition, if that's what we're going to do. But regardless of how we do that, we need to move forward with this consultant and get that plan underway. But we need somebody to tell us what we need to do that will enhance certainly our chances of reducing or maintaining at a minimum our ISO rate. Mr. Mayor.
So, but they're wonderful, but they're expensive, too. And I just believe due to the time constraints we've got, that I suspect our chief would probably get some things done prior, or I just think we should be moving on this on our own some, rather than depending totally, maybe totally is an extreme, but depending so much on a consultant and having to pay so much, so many fees to this consultant. I might be completely wrong with that, but I just feel like the chief's been around long enough that he probably has a pretty good feel of what needs to be done. We already know we need a new fire station. That's a given. I don't want to pay somebody $25,000, tell us we need a new fire station.
I don't think you would. I think what you would get is someone who would tell you probably where it really needs to be. I mean, you know, we, unfortunately, you know, even though we have a piece of land we might buy, but that might not be the ideal spot to put it. I mean, as far as the overall plan goes, as far as the city of Canton, you know, I think it makes sense, but...
Mr. Mayor, I would like to have Chief Floyd come up and to address this. And I believe totally in chief. I know he knows his business and knows what's going on. But he has referred to the fact that some new regulations are coming down, and I think it's important that he give us his authority on that because we want it.
The ISO consultant, we are moving forward, trying to accomplish some of the things that we do know has to be done. We're in the process of going through the records, documents, and everything that we know for a fact that is going to have to be in place when they get here. But ISO consultant brings into us is, there's a lot of stuff in ISO that we are not told. For one reason or another, we've been to the class... Uh, for one reason or another, we've been to the classes, we've got the books, there's certain things in there that ISO does not afford to us, so you just don't do it. So we have, we're asking for the consultant to come here and get the specifics on what they're looking for. A couple of things that, that I found out while we were interviewing with the consultants is things like, um, some of the trucks we can get deal ratings on. Uh, I've gone through every book that I've got, and there's nothing in there that says that. That, that is something that could pick up as much as four or five points, which is a lock when you're looking at ISO. So that is one of the, the driving factors. The, uh, the fire station placement, as, as the mayor pointed out, the land we have may not be the best place for it. City of Woodstock, one of their stations, ISO put them, they didn't move it a quarter mile. And I do not want to come in here in front of y'all and say, we need to move this station a quarter mile radius before we build it. So that is something to help us get that more specific. The, the changes that ISO was looking at there still not been released. Uh, when we were meeting with the consultant, they are saying that, uh, the stations will be rated only, uh, five mile radius. Where before, it was based on height counts, uh, depends on the class that you're looking for. So there is a lot of, a lot of very specific and minute detail that he will come in and look at, whoever we decide, if y'all decide to choose ISO consultant.
Now, Chief, one thing, so we've been talking about is that there's trade-offs. For example, uh, you have to be able to be within the designated area within, I don't know, four minutes or five minutes.
Was it spylage now?
Oh, okay, spylage now, okay. So there are certain areas that we're going to be outside that, but there are other things that we have had, just as you pointed out with the truck, will give us points back, so we might lose some, might gain some, and these, some of these points now, we don't know exactly all of, just like you were saying. So I think it's important to get the total, uh, out of the front of that.
One of the worst things that I can see happen to us is when they go from our fire station, they go out five miles, they're going to say, this is where their fire protection stops, and then they will utilize another ISO rating from that point on. That, that is the worst case that I see possible right now, and that is because the city has grown so long, uh, and that's the challenges that we're facing.
And the other thing for council to keep in mind is that this is basically a once-in-a-ten, every ten-year opportunity to have your ISO rate established. There are some limited, uh, appeals, that there are, there's an appeal process for some limited components of your overall rate evaluation. But basically, your rate's set for the ten years, is that correct, Chief? So you want to get it right, you don't have many chances for forgiveness.
If, if I might ask a question there, with the five-mile designation, uh, would that not then put the Great Sky in jeopardy as being more, in some areas of Great Sky, more than five miles from our station?
Yes, sir.
So that they would fall into the, well, like, county has five-nine, they would fall into something like that?
They would probably fall into five. Baycon, the upper end of the, uh, the Sparkway, places like that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and, and really, have they changed the requirement that we need to be two and a half miles from Chattahoochee type?
No, sir. Forget for the maximum points, it's two and a half miles from larger buildings, uh, as you span out at various points, but most organizations, I mean, to stand up here and say, oh, we need a fire station without two and a half miles of a building, you require a ladder truck, y'all would bring the other down, because it is an enormous amount of trucks. We try to make up other ways that that is efficient. So if we get one within four miles of that, and we make up other things, then we're, we're accomplishing the same thing.
Okay, for the, just for the regular staffing matters, how do we stand up compared to ISO?
The ISO consultant we talked to said we need six people at each station per year. Right now, we have three. The, uh, we, we are going to take a large hit on personnel when ISO does that.
I see you, uh, yeah. It's, I, I can tell you, it's sort of a quirky thing, that you, it's, it's mystical or magic or something, I mean, what do you do to get this points or that points? Nobody really seems to know, it's a big secret. Somebody's got the answers up there, and if we can tap into that, we'll be way ahead of the game, I think. But, uh, it's always been that way, you know, well, what do we do? We, we can do this, we think this is going to help, but then we didn't know about that, you know, we didn't do that, so that's going to hurt us. I mean, somebody needs to come in and say, okay, this is what you need, here's your overall plan for your city right now, as we project the growth over the next whatever years. And at the same time, we have to work with the county at the same time. It has to be a mutual effort there to know, there's no sense in us putting one here at the city limits and then them coming in, build one on the other side, or vice versa. It makes no sense. We have to cooperate, I think, within, you know, you know, working distance with them as well, so, uh, it, it could be a pretty complicated process. I'd love to see this plan developed and a, a map laid out showing three or four new fire stations that we're going to build over the next, how many ever years, and having a mechanism to pay for it. I think that's what, what we're going to have to do.
Mr. Mayor? We're talking about building a new fire station, but the obvious thing, which doesn't require a consultant, but the very obvious, is that we got to get more people. That's the single biggest thing we got. Not the station, I don't think. I think it's the people. And we just got to decide whether we want to have him in the staff.
Right.
And that has to come through bonds.
No, that, that would be through our next legislative, uh, our next question.
Chief, one, one last question. You, you said that there are certain things about the new ISO procedures that have not been released. Would the ISO consultant know that?
They'll know most of it. There are certain things that have not been released, uh, when I ask them about it, which they'll not know, but the, the majority of them, they, they do now. So what they're doing is they're writing them as they're going out to consultant or professional agencies, so that, that's how they're picking up on what they're changing on.
You, you said that we need six people to build stations now. Do you have any idea what, what that would entail with salary line? With the grade, I guess, but...
Just, just guessing, but, now, homie to it, I would say probably somewhere in the neighborhood of four or five hundred dollars. And the reason he came up with six, we have two aerial sites, we have a, a ladder truck downtown, we have a platform at the other station. Those trucks will get points for them for having it. We're not getting one for, for sponsorship costs. Uh, right now, if a firefighter gets a commercial fire, they get into aerial devices, they go, which means we're leaving a truck an inch behind, which represents points for that, and so we're not going to get points for any of the aerial devices that we have.
That is part of his reason for requiring the, the red issue.
Well, as a council, I just think that's something that we as councilmen have to help protect our citizens. It's truly the most important thing that we need to do, is get staff.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I think we're trying to evaluate something, we don't even know what it is as far as whether or not we should get a consultant. I think we should let Mr. Wood proceed to come with a proposal that we can say yea or nay to.
All right.
Let me say, and I, I fully intended to have that proposal tonight, but at the beginning yesterday and confirmed today, we, we, we did not feel comfortable with, with where we were in the recommendation, and, and we're just as eager to get it resolved as anybody, but we want it to be resolved the right way with the right firm.
One question I just wanted to, to have answered at some point in time. I had a long talk with my state farm agent, and, and he told me that state farm charges the homeowner's insurance the same exact amount, whether it's an ISO of five, four, three, two, or one, anything.
Change insurance, got to tell you. The best they're charging you is one.
I'm, I'm just telling you what, and, and again, that's what I would like to know, because really, this is all about what our citizens are paying for their, and, and, you know, what they rate, these insurance companies rate, I learned. Fire is just one of the things they look at, but, and so the, the fire ISO is, is one piece of the puzzle, but it's really, as always, it boils down to money, and that's what our spokes are at, hey? So I, I would like to know if that's true throughout the...
I'm being, you'd be selling fire insurance for homes, and I would find it, I'd, I'd hard to believe that they wouldn't care. Yes, but there is a list of about three pages of questions when we, you write a new fire policy, and there's numerous questions, and ISO is just one of many, but they do ask it, and if it is, it does go into the form.
So two identical houses sitting side by side with the same dollar value of interest, could they be paying different amounts with the same company?
Yes, they could. It depends on what's in the house, on the type of, type of heat, uh, type of, uh, roofs.
But the rate applied against what they really want.
Yeah, they go rate the value, they go rate the value of the house, and then they go apply that rate to it.
Mr. Rush? I can only repeat, repeat what I mentioned at council once before. I specifically called my auto insurance agency, which is in Canton, and I asked the question this way, what would happen to my home insurance if Canton's ISO rating went from four to a five? And the answer was, you'd pay seventy dollars more for your fire, for your insurance.
And each insurance company would be somewhat different there, but they, they would go up, and I feel very confident. Now, they might not catch it immediately, but time of renewal, or whenever the, uh, information goes into their database, they, they will catch it.
Okay, uh, I believe, uh, we discussed that enough, and Mr. Wood's going to come back with a, with a proposal that we can look at and evaluate at that time, and hopefully at, uh, maybe not the next meeting, but, uh, probably three weeks from now. But I think we need to keep that time constraint in mind as we move along. Okay, um, we're on, uh, we're on that here.
Case nine C.
Nine C, okay. Then we jump to discussion of water and sewer department system audit. Mr. Cummins?
Yes, I'd like to make the motion that we conduct an external audit of all software system controls with emphasis on the water and sewer billing and collection process that have been conducted. The city manager is to solicit bids from audit firms with the capabilities to perform such an audit and return to the council with bids by March first council meeting.
Okay, we have, a motion, do we have to say? You want to do that again?
I make a motion that an external audit of all software system controls with emphasis on the water and sewer billing and collection process be conducted. The city manager is to solicit bids from audit firms with the capabilities to perform such an audit and return to the council with bids by March first council meeting.
Have, have a motion. You heard the motion? You said it. Okay, I have motion and a second, uh, discussion.
Mr. Mayor, one question, one comment I would make is, we just went to a new software system, I think we're still in the development on the water and sewer, and, and paraphrasing somewhat, Mr. Councilman Huffman has said, I had an old boss who used to call a consultant someone who borrowed your watch and told you what time it is. And, and so I, I, I don't think I could support a, a complete, uh, computer system audit of the, of the city at this point.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Cummins?
System controls consist, or the process consists of three things. One, having system controls. Two, having a written write-up on how to use those controls, and the training of staff on how to use them. If we had all three of those things in place when we went live with our software, we never would have had an external problem on our water and billing, sewer, or water and sewer billing. Because we didn't have those controls, it doesn't say we wouldn't have had the problem, but it wouldn't have been external, because we would have caught the problem and fixed it. My concerns in making this motion is that it's just as Mr. Rush says, it is a new system. Where else are we exposed currently that we're not doing adequate system controls? And how likely is that to hit us externally? And we're sitting here trying to figure how to bail out another vote, because nobody thought that they should check or have a control that would tell them something didn't work right. If we proceed, what we would do is we don't review all the system, we review all the software system controls, we assess the personal, not personnel knowledge and cross-training in those software system functions, we assess system security, data, backup, and off-site archival of our very important asset, and then they would make recommendations as to improvements to and/or additional controls required to ensure software system processing accuracy.
Okay, so any, any other comments?
So what you're asking for is just, uh, the approval to get Mr. Wood to solicit bids, not spend any money tonight?
That is correct.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Uh, you just ran off the additional points, uh, to have Mr. Wood have come up with this type of consultant input. What is, is that the specs that you're going to have, Mr. Wood?
That's the scope.
Or scope.
Scope and work.
Okay, so long as we have that scope to go with that, any...
Any other discussion? Okay, that motion, a second. Those in favor, signify and saying aye?
Aye.
Who's no?
No.
I'm going to vote for the motion reception, Mr. Rush. Okay, item, um, 10B, authorizations transfer police dog ownership to Officer Jared Jordan.
We, um, we've got an unusual situation where we've got two police officers who have lived together and worked together for the past seven years. They, they swayed it together, they've ridden thousands of miles together, uh, they've shivered together in the winter, they, they've gotten wet together on days like today, for almost three thousand consecutive days going on that. Any two creatures can't help but form a special bond when they've got that constancy of interaction and familiarity and co-dependency. Now, one of them is retiring. He's the four-legged one of the two of them. He's getting a much deserved rest. We're going to be asking tonight that council authorize the transfer of the ownership of Pharaoh, our canine dog, to Officer Jordan, who has, who has been his constant companion over the seven, past seven years. A dog like Pharaoh is trained in a particular manner, and he's taught early on to respond only to one person, and that's to his handler. And Pharaoh's disposition and his lifelong training would make it difficult for him to socially readapt to other persons and other households. The practice of transferring ownership to the handler upon retirement of specialized police dogs is quite common in situations like this. I understand that from Mr. Dyer that Hotty Springs recently transferred ownership of their can, canine, to his handler when it retired. I know from talking to Jeff Moon and Woodstock that they did the same thing recently. Only difference was Jeff told me that in their case, city council did not actually vote to approve it. He just asked anybody on city council who thought they might want the dog to see if they could get it out of the backseat. And as a side, we, we expect possession, uh, to take possession during the first week of February of Pharaoh's successor. But in the meantime, we're asking that the mayor and council formally award ownership of, of Pharaoh. I'm told that sometimes an ownership is nine tenths of the law anyway, so nine tenths of the way we're there, but to formally award ownership of Pharaoh, who is our retirement police canine dog, Officer Jared Jordan.
Mr. Mayor, I would be proud to make that motion.
You can second it. He, he made the motion, you second it. If I had anything to say? Those in favor, signify and saying aye?
Aye.
Who's no?
All members voting aye. Best to the retired officer.
Okay, uh, 10.
The city manager, before, do you have something?
Uh, only a couple of quick points, Mayor. Um, Mr. Huffman might want to speak to this as well, but I guess it's something, it becomes a lot of focus. We did have, uh, what we believed to be a, a very encouraging meeting yesterday with representatives from, uh, TPA, uh, in discussing a possible site for our reservoir public access. Uh, the charge is for Mr. Dyer to work with their legal counsel in drawing up an agreement to, uh, enable us to develop, um, a, a public access, uh, on a site owned by TPA up near the intersection of, uh, Baycon and Reservoir Drive. up near the intersection of Baycon and Reservoir Drive. And so that's underway again, I think, everybody at that meeting, Mr. Huffman, Mr. Dyer, and Mr. Tatum off up in Courage, our progress there. Our roof work is about eighty percent complete. That indicates to me that we are on track and expect for that work to be a hundred percent completed by middle February, not a little bit before.
Mr. Wood? I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
May I speak to Mr. Wood? Thank you. Understand we have another leak. Was that due to the roof or was that due to groundwater?
I'm not sure which leak you're referring to.
The one that was before his office.
Yeah, that was referred, was, came through the wall. That was not relative to the roof repairs.
Okay, so...
We're having some air testing done down there. We relocated that particular office, that's isolated that office. But when, when all the remediation work was done in this building last year, the east and north walls were dug down and those were...
Trenched.
Trenched and waterproof. The south wall was not, apparently there was an irrigation sprinkler rupture there. Nobody realized it, and apparently it did penetrate that wall. Obviously no structural damage or anything like that.
Are we going to get a leak credit?
I think you're through, aren't you?
Yes.
We're going to the door. All right, under the mayor's report, the other thing I have, what you have in your package is the recommended committee appointments for 2012. You have all the committees in there, and there are only maybe four or five or so that are any different than they were last year. But I would recommend the approval of these along with... We did get in there the city attorney, which should also be there. Okay, good. Okay, Mr. Mayor? Okay, good. As long as it's on that, I just want to...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I have, I have an issue with this, and I'd like to ask, I've got three things to mention, Andrew, and I'd like to ask Mr. Dyer.
Okay.
Because in the charter in section 311B, it says members of boards, commissions, and authorities of the city shall be appointed by the city council for such terms of office and in such manner shall be provided by ordinance except where other appointing authority, terms of office, manner of appointments is described by this charter or law. My comment is that I don't believe that the council was solicited for appointments on this. And so I think that the way the appointments were made might not be in conformance with the charter. And the second point is, same section of the charter, item D, says that no elected officials may serve on boards or authorities. And I just want to ask Mr. Dyer if my interpretation is correct as it applies to these appointments. If not, then there's no real problem.
I would say on your point about B, they haven't been appointed by anybody yet, that's what the vote's for. So once the council votes, they would be appointed by the city council. You're raising a question of how the process, but once you vote, that would be, that's fine. D, it says except as otherwise divided by charter or law. Some of, I think some of them are council members supposed to be on. So we might have to look at each one and see which ones are supposed to be on and which ones that can't be on. Mr. Goodman may just be left over on a couple of these that we, you know, that he needs to come up on. We just have to look at them and see which ones require a council member or which ones don't.
And the third item is Assistant City Judge, we showed Dana Thompson, and she gave us a letter of resignation last January.
She had to come up last year.
Yeah, she came, that should have been stringed in there, yeah. Thank you, I'll get it answered. It is on the...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
One quick question, Mr. Dyer, I think we're addressing this in the charter revisions, aren't we not?
I don't think we did in this particular provision, so we might need to think about that. We did on some other places, but I don't think we did it.
Well, I think you brought up the question of what the, what a committee was between a council committee and a...
Yeah, that was, that was somewhere else. So we haven't got this particular one.
We may, you may want to take a look at that and put it in the revision.
Have we done it on the other one?
Yeah, please. And second, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make the motion that we adopt the mayor's recommendation for committee appointment.
Sir, I have a motion and a second. Any other discussions? If not, those are favor signature five, say aye? All opposed, no? I'll give a second motion. Thank you very much. Well, I would like now to go back, we skipped over a question that Mr. Huffman had in reference to our discussion with Mr. Bryan, was talking about the ethics situation as to whether or not, he thought we were going to let you get bowled out there, Eddie. Whether or not it would be an ethical violation for someone getting a senior exemption, or even, let's just say, even a homestead exemption. A regular homestead or senior, to vote on such an issue.
There are two questions. One is can you vote? That's addressed by state law, which prohibits you from voting on any matter where you have a personal interest. That's what the statute says. That's defined, and by case law, as meaning your financial interest. I don't think you're prohibited, in my opinion, you're not prohibited from voting. If any vote where those, any time there's a vote where council members have voted when they shouldn't, it's an invalid act. So I don't think that's the case. Under the ethics ordinance, though, it's a different language, and Mr. Bryan pointed out that language. The question becomes this. If you vote on a homestead exemption applies to everybody, then there's no question, there's no problem. If everybody gets it, then there's no problem. So lowering taxes, raising water rates, lowering water rates, that's not anything benefiting you different from anybody else. So then the question is, how big does the group have to be to where that's still true? My personal opinion is that saying everybody over sixty-two is a big enough group, that is not a problem. But ultimately, the ethics board would have to decide if somebody filed...
But his, his motion would not have been a problem, as he said, to, for reprimand, that would not be...
I don't think so. I guess it'd be questioned if you denied it, but we did. I don't, I don't, I don't think there's a problem, but Mr. Bryan's point is a valid one, which is a citizen can file a complaint, and ultimately, that's decided by the ethics board. And to interpret what I just said, this issue of if we give a tax break to three of us, that would be a problem. Twenty, probably still a problem, but a thousand, I don't know. That's just subject to somebody's judgment.
I'd risk that one, I'm afraid. Okay, since we got that clear to us, we do need to have an executive session, I'm told. So I would need a motion... Well, I would need a motion to amend the agenda to include the executive session to discuss litigation.
So a motion?
I have a motion and a second. Those are favor signature five, say aye? All opposed, no? Now we have to vote, now we got to vote to go into executive session. So we need a motion to adjourn the executive session for the purpose of discussion of litigation. Second, I have a motion and a second. All those are favor signature five, say aye? All opposed, no? We will not be coming out and making anything other than that.